Everybody, welcome. Wow, we feel so popular today. It's so awesome to see everybody here today. Beautiful day. I first need a report coming out of closed session. And coming out of closed session, I just wanted to tell you that we have nothing to report. So with that, we're going to open up our meeting of July 22, 2025. Again, I'd like to welcome all of you here today. And we will begin with a roll call, please. Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Boone.
Present.
Supervisor Flores.
Present.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer. Supervisor Stevens.
Here.
Supervisor Baines.
Present.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. And if I could ask everyone to please rise. Or should I just say stand? Rise just sounds so official. But please stand. And we will have an invocation by my friend here, who's Greg Mansour with Adventure Church of Yuba City. How are you, Greg? Great to see you here today.
Thank you. Thanks. Good to be here.
And then after that, please remain standing for a pledge of allegiance led by Stephanie Jordan, okay?
All right, let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. And we, again, Father, whenever we come into an occasion like this, we're just so grateful for our community. Thank you for our neighbors. Thank you for our friends. Thank you for these leaders, Father. Give them wisdom today. Give them discernment. Give them clarity in the matters that are before them. Thank you for their service. Thank you for their families. Thank you for their staff. I pray, Lord, your blessing upon all the agenda items today. Father, thank you for our Sheriff's Department, our first responders, our firefighters. Lord, just bless them. Watch over them. Protect them. We're so grateful for their sacrifice and for their service to our community. This is our home, and we love it, and we're so grateful to be a part of it. So thank you for each one who's gathered here today. We ask your blessing on this meeting. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Greg. And Stephanie, now, to lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Well, that is everybody except the supervisors. We need to go to the front.
Will Aaron Walrath with Twin Cities Rescue Mission, Amanda Houston with Say Love, and John Nicoletti with Habitat for Humanity, please join the board up front to receive a plaque for your contributions to the Better Way Emergency Shelter?
Hold on one second. Mike Buttercuboli, can you come on up for Say Love too? Okay. And, you know what, actually, everybody who's here for these organizations, come on up here, because we want to recognize all of you at once. We're going to recognize... Please come on up. These guys do incredible work. You know, these organizations. I don't... Is Habitat present? Is anyone from Habitat present today? Okay. Well, we're going to say nice things about them anyway, okay? I know they're not here, but this is like, for me, I get the privilege of living in Sutter County and working in Sutter County and working in Yuba County. And I'll tell you what, these organizations do, they do profound work that really has a positive impact on our community as a whole. And it's just incredible the work they do. So it's my honor to call them up here. So I'm going to read this. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors wishes to extend our most sincere appreciation to Say Love, to the Twin Cities Rescue Mission, and to Habitat for Humanity for their meaningful contributions to the Better Way Emergency Shelter. Your support uplifts lives and strengthens our community as a whole. So let's give them a huge round of applause. Thank you, guys, very much. And I'm going to ask you guys from each end, just to say a couple of words, okay? Who wants to start? Want to start?
No.
I'll start. You know, Say Love wouldn't be up here if it wasn't for our community, both Sutter and Yuba County. So this is for all of the volunteers that go throughout the county and do what we do, or else we wouldn't be able to do it. So thank you.
And Twin Cities Rescue Mission wouldn't be up here without Say Love and the rest of this awesome community. We are 100% donor-supported, and this community has just got behind us. I've been in the job for 20 months now, and I would have never thought, less than two years ago, that I'd be standing here. So I just really appreciate you, but I couldn't do it without these guys that are here with me. They go out in the community. They do a lot of hard work. I have a wonderful board. A few of them are present here right now, and I couldn't do it without everybody, without the support. So thank you. Thank you, Sutter County.
Yeah, I'd just like to add that there's several people in this room that are changing lives. And I see it a lot going on in how we're able to touch different people in the community and such selfless leadership. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. And Sarah, have you say a few words?
Very briefly, I'm your Health and Human Services Director, and I just want to step out and thank you so much. And we can't do it without you. You are all examples. You are representing so much hope. You came and you poured concrete. You put walkways in for us. You helped keep Better Way clean. You put in insulation so that people had a more comfortable stay. You did that. We can't do it without you, and we are so grateful for each of you.
Okay, if I can have you guys stand closer, because we have our professional photographer, Gina, is here today. Yeah, where's the other plaque? Right here. You guys line up in the front here. Yeah, and we'll all line up around you. Okay. Okay. Everybody squeeze in. This is great. I mean... All right, Gina, tell us when you're ready. All right, come on. Anybody else missing? Come on, let's go. We share the love. Oh, that's Say Love. All right, thank you, guys, so much.
Will Twin Cities Rescue Mission please remain up front to receive a plaque for your generous spirit and tireless service to those in need?
Is there another for Twin Cities? Okay. Oh, here it is. Okay, I got it. Yep. Aaron, welcome back. Jeez. You're getting very famous. We're proud of you. You're doing a great job. Like I said, I get to see you on both sides of the river, and it's kind of... This man right here is everywhere. But doing amazing things. So this is just for Twin Cities Rescue Mission. And the Sutter County Board of Supervisors wishes to extend our most sincere appreciation to Twin Cities Rescue Mission for your generous spirit and your tireless service to those in need. So short and sweet. Aaron, I'm going to let you say a few more words. I'd really love to maybe give them a quick background of where you started from and where you're at now. Not too long, but just give us some good info, okay?
Well, 20 months ago, as you already know, at the inception of it all, I just felt led to just be a blessing in the community. And I felt God was telling me, if you'll bless the community, the community will bless you. And this is just something right here that's just proving to what I believe God had told me. We started adopting parks and painting over graffiti. And in six months this year alone, we've brought over 17 tons of trash out of the river bottoms and just around areas where there's homeless camps and stuff like that. And these guys are just amazing. The way that they're giving back to the community and the sense of autonomy that they're getting by helping and becoming something. And, you know, they don't have to fear law enforcement anymore, because they're doing what's right in the sight of God. And just building those bridges, it's just amazing to see. They don't look in their rearview mirror anymore. They're not scared for any reason, and they're just moving forward in life. And I mean, I just stand up here, I'm just a spokesperson for the group. These guys, these guys are killing it out there, and I just appreciate each and every one of you so much. And thank you all for your support.
Thank you, brother. Okay. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. All right. That was awesome.
Will Jennifer Jordan please join the board up front to receive a gold resolution for your commitment and service to the Yuba-Sutter community?
Come on up. Bring your family with you, Jennifer. How are you? Sit right here. And Jennifer is here with her parents, Stephanie and Eric. And it is my honor today to have Jennifer up here. We have a special award, Jennifer, for you. This is a lifetime of service and community commitment. Jennifer Jordan has dedicated her life to the service of others, beginning her volunteer work in the Yuba-Sutter community at the remarkable age of 14 and continuing for decades. Over the course of her lifelong commitment, Jennifer has generously given more than 15,000... Wow, that's a big number. 15,000 volunteer hours to more than 20 local organizations, exemplifying the highest ideals of civic engagement, altruism, and compassion. Jennifer's service has benefited numerous institutions and causes, including but not limited to the Fountain Skilled Nursing Center, St. Andrews Church, Hope for the Heart, the Yuba-Sutter Food Bank, Meals on Wheels, Habitat for Humanity, Yuba City Senior Center, Sutter County Library, Glad Tidings Church, and the Sutter Buttes Canine Rescue. Jennifer's spirit of service also extends to her personal interests, including her participation in the Special Olympics and her meaningful relationships with local seniors, whom she offers both companionship and care. Jennifer's outstanding example serves as a beacon of what it means to be a dedicated volunteer, a compassionate neighbor, and a true community leader. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors hereby honors Jennifer Patricia Jordan for her exceptional lifetime of service and expressed our deepest gratitude and admiration for your extraordinary contributions to the Yuba-Sutter community. May your example continue to inspire current and future generations with the same heart, humility, and dedication. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give a round of applause for her wonderful... Okay, thank you so much. We're going to take a photo together, though. We'd like to take a photo.
Will Angela Christensen with Rescue Paws please join the board up front to receive a proclamation recognizing August 2025 as National Dog Month? Is Angela Christensen here?
Angela, are you here? Or... No? How about the dog? Dog here? Oh, darn it. Okay.
Will Chief Nicole Rittner please join the board up front to receive a proclamation recognizing July 20 through the 26, 2025, as Probation Services Week?
Come on over here. Over here. Yeah, you're right here, right in the center. We need to present the award to you. There she goes. All right, we got it. Little musical chairs. Okay, Probation Services Week. Probation professionals play a unique and essential role in California's criminal and juvenile justice systems, keeping communities safe by providing justice, involved individuals with accountability, support, services, and tools necessary to safely and successfully re-enter society. Probation departments serve as key connectors within the justice system and local communities, maximizing the resources available through courts, local governments, law enforcement, social services, behavioral health providers, schools, crime survivor organizations, and nonprofit agencies. Probation professionals balance the need for accountability with the opportunity for individuals to engage in treatment and rehabilitation. Probation departments have a profound impact on community safety and well-being by addressing the root causes of crime through individualized supervision and supports that reduce recidivism. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the week of July 20 through the 26, 2025, as Probation Services Week to highlight probation's immense contributions to our communities and state. Okay, we'll present you with this plaque, and let's give a round of applause.
So a lot of community members don't really know what probation does, and that could be a good thing. But I think we kind of go under the radar. We just go about and do our business. But we work really hard at both keeping the community safe, holding people accountable. But more importantly, we're providing the opportunity for those who need it to rehabilitate and join back the community in a very healthy way. And so we do some pretty important work. It's pretty intricate. We have to have both sides to us, and I'm really proud of the staff that I have, and especially these staff right here. I thank them for coming today. And they just work really hard. And one last thing, I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for all the support they've given us. We've felt very supported throughout my time here and before that. And I just want to thank you guys for allowing us to do what we do.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you. She's ready to go. Okay, thank you, Cass. Appreciate you. Thanks. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Will Zachary Hamel and the Office of Emergency Services please join the board up front to receive a proclamation recognizing August 2025 as National Emergency Management Awareness Month?
All right, Zach looks sharp today. Let's just say he's outshining us up here. Okay. National Emergency Management Awareness Month. Sutter County is vulnerable to a range of hazards, including flooding, wildfires, and severe weather events, which pose significant threats to life, property, and our unique agricultural environment. Local emergency managers in Sutter County, along with those in every sector at every level, dedicate countless hours to developing and maintaining preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation programs to protect the residents and rural communities that define our county. Emergency managers, including those serving Sutter County, demonstrate commitment, compassion, and professionalism during emergencies, such as the flooding along the Feather and the Sacramento Rivers, wildfires in the Sutter Buttes, and public health crises. The efforts of our nation's emergency managers have helped millions of community members across the United States recover, rebuild, and become more resilient in the face of adversity. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the month of August 2025 as National Emergency Management Awareness Month and urge community members to express their sincere appreciation for emergency managers in every sector who work diligently to prepare, protect, and serve our cities, counties, and states, tribes, territories, regions, and organizations against all hazards and risks. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you. You say a few words, too.
So I want to thank the board for recognizing this inaugural Emergency Management Awareness Month. This is the first time in the nation that we've done an Emergency Management Awareness Month. So thank you for that. Emergency managers, they work behind the scenes. They're coordinating. They're building relationships. They're assisting other first responding agencies, whether it's evacuation, planning, issuing alerts or warnings. So they're in the background staffing emergency operation centers and making sure that everyone gets to go home and reduces that threat or that issue that's occurring in the community. I would be remiss if I didn't recognize my important staff here today. They work tirelessly, whether it's nights, weekends. They are dedicated to their craft, and they make us look really good, and they really support those first responders and those community members. So thank you again, and thank you for the support.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I want to thank your staff for always answering the phone when we call. I mean, it's a 24-hour job. You know, when there's fire at the neighbors or somewhere, you know, and mutual aid, they're letting us know what's going on, letting us know if we could do anything for them to help them out, if they need lunches or whatever, or dinners. But you guys work tirelessly, and we thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Want to take a photo? Okay.
Will Sutter County Public Health please join the board up front to receive a proclamation recognizing August 2025 as National Breastfeeding Awareness Month?
Come on up. These are the people. All right. Come on up. Cool. Great. I gotta read something. Hey, where's the... Oh, here we go. How are you doing? Okay, here we go. National Breastfeeding Awareness Month. Forward Together. The American Academy of Pediatrics recommends exclusively breastfeeding for the first six months of life and continued breastfeeding for children up to two years of age or older. Breastfeeding helps prevent child malnutrition, ensures food security for infants and young children, decreases the risk of asthma, diabetes, obesity, heart disease, and breast cancer. The Tri-County Breastfeeding Alliance, along with local partnering agencies, has been able to provide high-quality educational opportunities for health professionals over the past several years. The 2025 theme for National Breastfeeding Month is Forward Together, centers unity, solidarity, and hope, and celebrates the strength and determination of the organizations and advocates committed to advancing policy, systems, and environmental change in the first food field... Why would I say that three times fast? First food field and improving access to human milk. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim August 2025 as Breastfeeding Awareness Month in Sutter County, and the board shows their support and appreciation for those efforts. Thank you so much. We'll have you say a few words.
Just really want to thank our nursing and our WIC staff and all our public health staff, who really worked tirelessly on promoting breastfeeding and educating new moms and new parents on the value of breastfeeding and all the benefits that it conveys. So really, the staff are... We have a lot of our WIC and nursing staff, and they're wonderful.
Okay, smile for the photo? Okay, thank you very much, Cass. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, yeah. This concludes the presentation portion of our show, or our meeting. And so we're going to reconvene in one minute. So those of you who don't want to stay for the whole meeting, you know, you don't have to. And we thank you all for being here today, okay? Thank you. Yeah. So again, one-minute break. For those of you guys in the back, if you come closer, we could even read the signs better. If you want to come... There's plenty of room up here. Yeah. We have a lot of seats now, too. Madam Clerk, are we ready to go ahead and reconvene? Yes, we're... All right, good to go. Okay, we'll start with public comment. Members of the public who are allowed to address... Well, sorry, will be allowed to address the board on items of interest to the public that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors. State law provides that no discussion or action may be taken on the item not appearing on the posted agenda. So we'll start with public comment. Do we have a public comment, Madam Clerk? Okay.
Yes, we have four. The first speaker is Sammy Mendoza.
Okay. Welcome, Mr. Mendoza.
Yeah, also, you want us to turn on the mic when you're speaking, but sure. Yep. All right, gentlemen. It's been quite some time since I saw you guys. I saw you guys at the Peach Festival not too long ago. But primarily, the reason why I was here last time is because I was suggesting that we don't have a young entrepreneurial board here in Yuba City or in Marysville, and I wanted to start instituting one. Since then, I've been to the other Board of Supervisors meeting. I went this morning. I announced my intentions for the Chamber of Commerce. I went to the Marysville City Council. I gave them also my intentions for the Chamber of Commerce. Now I'm just here making my last touch here with you guys, letting you know that with my qualifications... I also gave you my resume last time, Dan. With my qualifications, my planning, my expertise in economics, I think it would be an ideal opportunity for me to serve you all in the Chamber of Commerce for both Yuba and Sutter County. This is a very real opportunity for me. I've been really just fact-finding and going in and out and throughout our counties, trying to figure out how I can best serve you all. I really laid it out in this document for you guys. I have a more intensive explanation as far as a presentation that I can give you guys. So you can better understand where I'm coming from, what I have to offer you in the Chamber of Commerce. I really view the Chamber of Commerce as an ideal opportunity for our counties to really thrive. I feel like it's been made a little bit too small of what it's actually capable of. I've also been doing my political activism with the different political groups, with the Yuba Republicans, the Sutter Republicans. So I've been all over the place doing my work. So I would look forward to working for you guys in this council, working for our city, for our counties. And if you guys have any questions, please reach out to me. I put my contact information on my resume, Dan. I gave that to you a little while ago, last time we met. I gave that to you a while, a little while ago, last time we met, but please feel free. I would love to get to know you more so I can serve you better, and to serve the community as well. This is a really exciting opportunity for me. Marysville was very excited for me, and it seems like I also have the support from the Yuba County Board of Supervisors. So I would really love your support as we go forward. So thank you for your time. I won't take any more of your time. I enjoy you guys, thank you for what you do, and I look forward to working with you guys for the people here. God bless.
Thank you for your comments, appreciate it.
The next speaker is Chandra Tucker.
I'm not that tall. Okay, is that better?
Yes.
I'm a little shorty.
Perfect.
Thank you. Good afternoon, how are you guys today? My name's Chandra Tucker, and I'm an Inverton Councilor 2 with the Sutter County, and I've been employed both Sutter County since 2002. And since January of this year, I've been serving as the President of Sutter County Employees Association, ASME Council 57, and I'm also a member of the negotiation team. And I was here before this board, June 24th, to urge you to look at our healthcare costs, and as you're aware, the impact to at least 100 families is not currently... That are not currently on the high deductible plans will be devastating for those families. So as you know, in 2026, the insurance rates will increase 21.9%, costing employees the following monthly. So anyone on the PPO 1500 plan for a single person will be $119 a month more. Employees plus one will be $259 a month more, 272 for a family. On the 1000 plan, a single employee will pay $125 more, 248 for an employee plus one, and a family is going to pay 352. The PPO 500, a single employee is going to pay $178 more a month, 356 for an employee plus one, and a family is going to be $504. Kaiser High will be $180 more for an employee, 361 for employee plus one, and 511 for a family. The Kaiser Low is 162 for each employee, 326 for employee plus one, and 461 for a family. These families are already struggling to survive with high inflation that has impacted our country for years. Our members are at a loss of understanding as to why you would not allow the members to pick up the cost of the insurance with our counteroffer 1.9% for two years to allow time for these families to research their insurance plans, continue to give them the choice to choose an insurance plan, and make an effort to assist all employees moving forward. So we would ask that, you know, we would be able to assist them in understanding that maybe the high deductible would be better for them, but we don't want to push anybody into making a choice that would affect their family. So that's what I'm here to talk to you about today, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate you.
The next speaker is Kristen Lambert.
Hello, everyone. So for the ones that don't know me, my name is Kristen Lambert. I've been employed with Sutter County for eight years, working in public health, while my husband of 22 years has also been employed through the county roads department for 11 years. Together, we feel honored to serve the very community we were born and raised in, grew up in, currently live in, and have family and friends who are greatly impacted by our work. However, I stand before you today to be the one of the many voices of our county by standing up and voicing concern for my fellow employees, community members, livelihood. I ask you all to reconsider your rebuttal offer and stance of only a 2% COLA with nothing else to offer, no additional help with rising and increasing healthcare expenses, no additional time off, and no additional anything. I want to make it well-known that we were informed by our union representatives during negotiations, the county head leadership stance is way different than how the board traditionally sees their employees, and that speaks volume to us. Thank you, head leadership, for trying to do the right thing and show us we are valued. They all know and stated we should be given a much greater COLA increase in order to provide the basic necessities for all our families. However, you all somehow disagree and feel we should not. I am not sure how you all can justify that stance, while on the same note, ask for a 35% raise for yourselves to serve as a Board of Supervisor. Yes, I'm aware you tabled that for now, but it has been notated. While your very employees who are putting in the actual work day in and day out, also known as essential employees, are underpaid at least 15% compared to the surrounding counties. There are 193 job classifications under the salary resolution that compromise of senior custodians, office administrators, library workers, and more that all make less than $22 an hour at the county. This could easily make them qualified for government assistance based on their circumstances, you know, household size, et cetera. Due to the rising costs of everything, gas, groceries, clothing, housing, et cetera, the 2% only COLA will not stop some of our employees who have no other option than to be living out of their vehicles, homeless, or being forced to move in with family or friends, even if that's even an option. Are you okay knowing this is and could be happening to our community under your role and leadership as a Board of Supervisor? Yes, I'm fully aware that our county budget is struggling and has been struggling, however to no fault of our county employees that show up to work and give it their all, no matter what. I would like to close today by asking you all to seriously reconsider your offer by giving us a fair wage increase which shows the county employees the dignity, respect, and value we deserve. This also is doing what is right for the people and by the people. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you for your comments. Further public speakers?
Our final speaker is Tony Farley.
Tony Farley.
Hi, Tony. Tony Farley, 12 Main Wilk Creek Drive, Norfolk City. Here, I thank Brandon Barnes for his service, Chief Daley, the cadet rookie, the cadet W, the B W guy, the usher, I was Tony Smartwood, his bachelor manager, Manny Mendoza, Mendoza... You said graduate, you said graduate economics. Sarah Rios, thank you for Sarah Rios. Thank you, Zachary Hamble. Zachary Hamble's in the house. Zachary, you're here? Thank you, Carl Baines. Carl Baines, the best supervisor, Carl Baines. Thank you, Jeff Boone. Jeff Boone Boone, thank you. Dan Flores, the Star Wars guy, the poor people. Jeff Stevens, Stevens Park has pumpkin. And Mike Ziegemeyer, my hunkers versus Rusak Huskies, hunkers. And thank you, Laura. Thank you, probation, thank you, Sarah. Sarah for probation, Sarah probation. Thank you, William Bell, the lawyer. Thank you, Professor Steve Smith. And thank you, New Yorker, New Yorker right there, New Yorker Ivy League, New Yorker. Thank you, New York City lady, New York State lady. Thank you, the funny shirt, Brandon Barnes, the Brandon Barnes. And also Zachary Hamble, Zachary Hamble. And thank you, Neil from Caltrans. And thank you, Veronica. Thank you for your service, everybody.
Any further speakers, Madam Clerk? Any further speakers? Okay, there being no further speakers, we're going to move to the consent. Consent calendar groups together those items which are considered non-controversial or for which prior policy direction has been given to the staff that require only routine action by the board. The chair will advise the audience that matters may be adopted in total or in one motion. However, the board may at its option or upon request of a member of the public consider any matter separately. That'll entertain a motion. To the chair? Yes. Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, we have first by Supervisor Baines, second by Supervisor Ziegemeyer. Please roll call vote on consent.
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, consent carries. We'll give about... We'll give about 10 seconds for everybody, since they're clearing the room. While they're clearing the room, I do want to note that item 25 is being pulled from the agenda, so please remove item 25, and then we will commence here in a few seconds with item 26. Like I said, let's give them a few seconds to leave the room. Close the door, would you guys mind closing the door?
Amendment and rezone involving five parcels, APNs 13-280-148, 13-280-158, 13-280-159, 13-280-160, and 13-280-161. One parcel totaling 1.3 acres will be amended from Ag 80 to industrial commercial and rezoned from Ag to CM, and four parcels totaling 18.07 acres will be amended from ranchette to industrial commercial and rezoned from ranchette to commercial industrial. Adoption of the proposed mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program prepared in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act and the guidelines. Adoption of a resolution amending the general plan and approving project number U 23-0017, Siller. An introduction of an ordinance amending Sutter County zoning map to rezone assessors' parcels 13-280-148, 13-280-158, 13-280-159, 13-280-160, and 13-280-161. Waive the full reading, direct the clerk to read the title only, and adopt the ordinance as presented.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. And we'll open up, and you're not Neil Hay. How are you? Good to see you again.
Good.
Want to go ahead and introduce yourself again, and then we will have you do the presentation?
I'm Summer Venus Arroyo, Associate Planner with Development Services. So this project is a request for a general plan amendment and rezone for five parcels for a total of 19.37 plus or minus acres. The parcels are located on the north side of State Highway 20, approximately 340 feet east of Lidle Road. Access to all parcels is provided from North Colusa Frontage Road and an easement that runs across the southern end of all five parcels. Four of the parcels are currently zoned ranchette, and the smallest parcel is zoned ag. The subject parcels are surrounded by ag zoning on all sides. There are orchards to the north and south, an ag truckyard to the south, and single-family residences to the east and west. The applicant is proposing to amend the general plan designation of the 19.37 acres to industrial commercial and the zoning to commercial industrial. The ag parcel is developed with a single-family residence, and the easternmost ranchette parcel contains a dilapidated barn, both of which are proposed to be demolished prior to any future development. All other parcels are currently vacant. So no formal development proposal has been submitted for review at this time. The 300-foot agricultural buffer setback is required from the orchards to the north and south of all parcels, so there cannot be any buildings located within this area, and that's kind of what the applicant has conceptually drawn out here, is where building pads could go. With the proposed zoning designation, future development will require compliance with the county's design checklist and may require the property owner to apply for and obtain additional permits from the Development Services Department. The project was brought before the Planning Commission on June 18th, 2025, and the commission recommended approval of the project by a 6-0 unanimous vote. We have not received any letters or comments from the public in regards to this project. Staff is recommending that the board approves this project with the findings listed in the staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much for your presentation. With that, I'm going to actually open up a public hearing. Is there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Okay, there being none, we're going to close the public hearing. I'm going to ask the board for comments. I know Supervisor Ziegemeyer, you've been a big proponent of this project, and I'd love to hear your point of view, please.
Well, I think this is an exciting time for Sutter County. This is, as a matter of fact, Neil and I were talking over the last few months, I believe these future five retail locations are probably the first retail businesses possibly to come into Sutter County in many, many years. This is tax revenue coming in, this is jobs, this is what we need. In Sutter County, we sit in 70... Almost 70% of our land is in a FEMA flood zone, which means we're always going to be an ag community, and we love that. Heck, half these guys up here farm. But we need jobs, and we need tax revenue, and we need buildings to get there. So I want to thank the Siller family, who's developed all over the United States, but this is their roots right here in Sutter County, for coming here and making our county a better place and doing what they're doing. We're very excited. I can't wait till they break ground. We want to get some good pictures over there when they do the groundbreaking, but I'm excited for this. Thank you for sticking with us.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Ziegemeyer. Any other supervisors like to comment? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Supervisor Baines, second by Supervisor Ziegemeyer, and I'll call for a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, the ordinance carries. I'll ask the clerk to please read the ordinance.
An ordinance of the county of Sutter amending the zoning of certain parcels in the county.
Okay, thank you very much, and I would like to just echo Supervisor Ziegemeyer's sentiments. We're very much looking forward to having an economic development project at the site and watching the growth, and so good job, everybody, putting this together, and we look forward to progressing faster, not slower, and actually getting it done. So thank you so much. Okay, and with that, we'll move on to the next item. Madam Clerk?
Public hearing to consider project number U 25-002 Van Dyke, a tentative parcel map to divide an existing 275-acre parcel into 160-acre agricultural parcel and a 115-acre agricultural parcel. Find that this project is exempt from California Environmental Quality Act and adoption of a resolution to rescind and replace an existing development rights and open space easement agreement in ag district located on the east side of Pleasant Grove Road, on the south side of Stripland Road, Pleasant Grove, California 95668, APN 33-270-081. Applicant Robert Van Dyke, owners Robert and Karen Van Dyke, and Gary and Mary Van Dyke.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and you're not Neil either, so we have a name that says Neil Hay is going to present, so...
Right, yeah. Thank you, Casey Murray, Senior Planner with Development Services. So this project is a tentative parcel map to divide a 275-acre parcel into a 160-acre agricultural parcel and a 115-acre agricultural parcel, along with a request to rescind and replace an existing development rights agreement. The Planning Commission considered this project and staff's recommendation for approval at its June 18, 2025 meeting. There was no opposition regarding this project. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this project to the board by a 6-0 vote with one member excused. So the site is located on the east side of Pleasant Grove Road, on the south side of Stripland Road. The site is zoned agriculture and is designated as agriculture 80-acre minimum in the general plan. The subject property consists of rice fields, no structures are located on the site other than a solar array near the center of the... Near the center, and agricultural wells and pumps used for irrigation. So here's the proposed tentative parcel map that divides it into two parcels. And as discussed in our staff report, the area has gone through a long history of previous projects involving the creation of homesite parcels and lotline adjustments, and as a result, the project site is encumbered by an existing development rights agreement which prohibits the development of new residences on the project site. So the existing agreement needs to be rescinded and replaced with a new agreement that will encumber the proposed parcels. And as this project will only result in two large agricultural parcels with no land use changes, it is covered by the common sense sequoia exemption. So staff is recommending that the board approve this project with the findings listed in the staff report and the conditions of approval as attached. I'll take any questions you have at this time, thank you.
Okay, first of all, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Any members of the public have any comments regarding this topic? Okay, there being none, we'll close the public hearing, bring you back to the board. Board? Yes, Supervisor?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a first by Supervisor Baines, second by Supervisor Ziegemeyer, and I'll ask for a roll call vote on this one as well, please.
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Thank you for the presentation, and we look forward to seeing this project as well.
Receive a presentation on Sutter County museum updates and accomplishments in fiscal year 2024-25, and the... and the museum's impact on the community.
Welcome, Ms. Bloom.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair and Board of Supervisors. Molly Bloom, Director and Curator of the Sutter County Museum. Thank you for taking the time to hear my presentation today. You know, it's been a really special year for the museum, so. So I always like to start just by giving a little overview of the museum. So our mission as the Sutter County Museum is to share local stories, to strengthen community bonds, to inspire the celebration of our diverse cultural heritage, and to demonstrate how understanding the past prepares us for our future. And so, for those who don't know, the museum is a partnership between the County of Sutter and the Sutter County Museum Association, which is a five oh one C three nonprofit. And so we have a unique partnership to best serve the citizens of our community. So as a Department of Sutter County, our budget covers our staff salaries and benefits, utilities, building and grounds maintenance, and then basic business expenses like postage, printing, insurance. And then the Museum Association covers some of the programmatic elements. So our temporary exhibits, our updates to our permanent exhibits, other than this year, which you'll hear me talk about, some grant funding that brought us some permanent exhibits through the county. Our gift shop, our educational public programs, our field trips, any marketing and public relations that you see from the museum, our artisan community garden, and the membership program, which includes publishing three editions annually of our bulletin filled with local history articles. And so our staff responsibilities, we are a small team that provides many services to the community. I'd like to have you keep in mind, as we go through this presentation on the previous fiscal year, you know, that due to the hiring freezes and budget cuts, for seven months of last year, we had one full-time staff member. Now we have two full-time staff members and two part-timers. And so, like many people who received presentations earlier, I'd really like to thank our museum team for all of the work that they do to serve the community. Sorry, I'm looking at this nice little picture of us. Oh, guys. I wasn't pausing. I was just thinking. But yeah, so our staff, with the help of many volunteers, we operate a free publicly accessible museum. We're open Wednesdays to Fridays, nine to five, and Saturdays, twelve to four. We also work to add new permanent exhibits that share the local history of the Yuba-Sutter region. We provide free educational programs and school and community group tours. We manage the rental of Etl Hall for county departments and for the public. We maintain professional standards of artifact conservation and care for over twenty thousand objects and over eight thousand photographs that share the local history of the Yuba-Sutter region. We curate and display educational temporary exhibits. We collaborate with community partners to best serve our local citizens. We also are responsible for grant writing, administration, and management, and hiring, training, and coordinating volunteers, and more. I guess that covers the, like, other duties as assigned part of it. And so, in this presentation, I'm going to talk a little bit about some of our accomplishments for the community in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. So our visitation, our temporary exhibits, our educational programs, events, and tours, our volunteers, any other big accomplishments or projects, and grants and revenue. I had fun picking some pictures for this. So for visitation, we welcomed over seventy-five hundred visitors this year. As a note, last July first, we decreased in hours open to the public with our staffing decrease. So we went down from six days open a week to four, but we only saw a thirteen percent decrease in attendance from the previous year. And so I think that is a testament to a lot of the partnerships that we had throughout this year, which I'll touch on in a little bit. For temporary exhibits, we still brought six temporary exhibits on a diversity of topics to the community. We had our away-from-home American Indian boarding school stories. We had our annual collaboration with the Land Trust on the calendar exhibit, earthquakes and epidemics on natural disasters in California, the Willard Asylum Suitcases, a partnership with Behavioral Health to bring a meaningful photography exhibit here. Sorry. And Play Ball. This was an exhibit about Latino baseball players, where we brought some local objects to, you know, that tell the history of baseball in our community. And then right now, we have a very special temporary exhibit voyage to Vietnam about the Dut Festival in Vietnam for Lunar New Year. And then for educational programs, events, and tours, we had over a hundred and twenty free public programs, group tours, visits for the community. That includes field trips, our tours that we offer, our exhibit receptions, children's programs, events outside in our artisan community garden, and our popular speaker series program. And that brought forty-five hundred, almost, attendees to the museum. And that's about a five hundred person increase from last year. And a lot of what you're seeing of, like, our successes really wouldn't be possible without the volunteers who served our community this year. So we had about four thousand volunteer hours from about forty-five individual volunteers, as well as some group volunteers. And so a lot of this really goes to the dedication, especially of our nonprofit Museum Association, for really stepping up, serving the community more, and helping make sure we could accomplish everything that we hoped for this year. And then we also finished a couple of very big exhibit projects. I know you all have been by to see them. So we, thanks to a grant from California Humanities, we were able to add a local exhibit on Black History in Yuba-Sutter that also was made possible with substantial support from the Sutter County Museum Association and our community partners, most notably Gwen Ford of Connecting Cultures Collaborative, who served as the project advisor. And then in April, we completed our new permanent exhibits on the Nisanon, the Gold Rush, and Yuba-Sutter floods, thanks to our ongoing three-year grant from the California Cultural and Historical Endowment. But I also would like to thank, we received some substantial funding from the Sutter County Museum Association, the City of Yuba City, and United Auburn Indian Community of the Auburn Rancheria, all of whom helped to make this possible. We also added a new mural by local artist Madeline Joan Templeton, thanks to support from the Sutter County Children and Families Commission and the Museum Association to our artisan community garden. If you haven't had a chance to see it, you can see it from the road or even from the highway. That's a beautiful new feature we were lucky to add. And while we're celebrating all year long, but in April, we had a big community event and celebrated fifty years of the museum serving the community from nineteen seventy-five to today. Then in terms of grants and revenue, we actually had, as far as I can tell, the highest year, at least since I've been here, in revenue for Etl Hall. So we collected thirty-one thousand dollars, more than that actually, in revenue for rentals. So a very successful year in Etl Hall, especially thanks to our office assistant Daisy, who manages the rental of that and does a spectacular job despite only working four to eight hours a week. Some weeks she does an incredible job. And then we also, I wanted to mention, this is the final year of that grant funding for, from the California Cultural and Historical Endowment that I mentioned earlier. The remaining portion of that project will help us to create substantial educational programming for the community that will directly support our local schools and teachers. So that's sort of where we are with our incoming grant funding for this year. And then I'd really like to, you know, again, comment on, really, it was the strategic partnerships that made our successes possible this year with fewer staff and fewer hours within which to work. And although we work with many wonderful organizations in the community, nonprofits like Family Soup and Yuba-Sutter Arts and Culture, the Japanese-American Citizens League of Marysville, many more, I really also just wanted to shout out many of you who are actually in this room still, you know, the partnerships within the county. I think, as we all know, we have a great wealth of resources within the county. We have dedicated staff across all departments. And so I'd really like to thank all of you, really, for partnering with us this year and partnering on programs, partnering on exhibits, and working with us just to make all of these accomplishments possible. I ran out of space on the slide, so I'm sorry if I forgot anyone. And then, looking ahead, you know, this picture is from our celebration earlier in the year for the museum's fiftieth. But, you know, what we're focusing on this year is finishing out that grant period with those enhanced school and field trip opportunities. We're meeting with local teachers and school administrators to make sure that our programs can best meet the needs of their schools, their teachers, their students, and really tailor it toward our local community. And then this is pretty exciting. I haven't talked much about this, but we're also working on a project to increase our collections accessibility. I mentioned that we have over eight thousand photographs in the museum's collection. And so this year, our goal is to finish creating this online portal that will have a searchable database for the public to better access our photos, which, again, will decrease museum staff time, but is the number one thing that people look for from us. I actually just got a call earlier today from the City of Live Oak looking for photos. And when I said, you know, "we do and more" earlier, I didn't mention, but some days I receive about thirty to fifty emails a day of people asking about the museum's resources, people who need things, people who are doing research on projects. And so I think this will really help us better support the community if something they need and they want. Then we will continue to seek funding sources to sustain the museum and really grow our capacity to serve the community as we do every year. And then, of course, lastly, you know, we are celebrating our fiftieth year, so we look forward, with all of you, to serving the community for another fifty years. So thank you.
Right.
Sorry, sometimes I talk so long and so fast, I never take a breath. But thank you, guys. I'm happy to answer any questions. And just like you heard from everyone earlier, you know, we really appreciate your support. We appreciated seeing you all at the museum since April to check out our new exhibits and, you know, allowing us to seek these opportunities to work with partners to go after federal grant funding and state grant funding when it comes out so that we can find creative solutions to grow what we're offering. So thank you.
Thank you, and I'll tell you what, you don't speak too long at all. You got me, like, all jazzed up about the museum. And it's really, it's really exciting to hear. Every time you do speak, you know, the last time, few times I've heard you here, it seems to get better and better, you know? And I'm looking forward to you being here with us for fifty more years as well. So, but just, I just want to make a couple of comments, and I'll bring back the board for any comments. But just thank you for the presentation. And I really want to extend our gratitude for the work that you do with such a limited amount of resource. And it's incredible. I mean, just look, look at all the things that you've mentioned, from exhibits to all of the things that you've led, you know? So your leadership exudes, it shows. It's just a great, you know, demonstration of what can be done with a little bit, with a little bit of a passion. And it shows. It just really does. So we're just, we're really impressed by what's going on. Looking forward to the upcoming Christmas. It's already, it's already that time, because we received the invitation to go already. So looking forward to that event coming up and any other events that come along, and we'll continue to support the museum and what you do. So I would do want to bring it back to the board for any other comments. Yes, sir?
I'd just like to say how much I enjoy the receptions and looking at your museum. But you really have some good hors d'oeuvres and stuff when we go to the reception.
There you go. Any other comments from the board this time? Okay?
Molly?
Yeah, go.
Thank you for all that you, what you do. You've done a great job at the museum, and we really appreciate you. Thanks.
Good presentation.
Yeah, thank you all. I hope to see you all in fifty years, too.
All right. I don't know if I'll make that, but, you know, we might see. Any other comment? Okay, there being none, we'll move on. Thank you, Molly. Appreciate you.
Approval of an agreement with the California Forensic Medical Group for inmate healthcare services in an amount not to exceed four million one hundred thirty-one thousand three hundred fifty-six dollars and fifty-three cents annually for the period of August first, twenty twenty-five, through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight, with an option to extend for two one-year periods an authorization for the Health and Human Services Director or their designee to approve any amendments as long as such amendments do not increase the contract maximum.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. Sarah Eberhart Rios, your Health and Human Services Director. And of course, the sheriff has joined me as well. And we're asking for your consideration of a contract renewal with jail medical services provider, CMFG, also known as WellPath. HHS, in collaboration with the Sheriff's Department, oversees the county's contract with WellPath for basic inmate health services. And this contract also includes coverage for specialty care that might need to be provided outside of the jail setting, such as inpatient services or specialized medical care. The standards for required correctional health care are set by the California Code of Regulations, Title fifteen, which governs the basic health care services that are required within jail settings. The contract extension is, of course, being requested, as Gina shared in the title, for that three-year period of August first of twenty twenty-five through July thirty-first of twenty twenty-eight, providing medical services for up to two hundred and ninety inmates daily, with up to two additional one-year extensions. We would note that the contract does include a five percent increase of one hundred and ninety-six thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars for a total annual contracted amount of four million one hundred and thirty-one thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty-three cents. This increase is being funded by County General Fund and will cover increased staffing costs, durable medical increases, pharmacy increased costs, and specialty care cost increases incurred by WellPath in the provision of this contract. Those material changes, in addition to the five percent increase to the contract, also include language revisions, updates to roles and responsibilities, and the California Innovating Medi-Cal, CalAim, justice-involved initiative requirements. And I should note that the participation in the CalAim program within the jail setting is voluntary, so incarcerated persons do have to opt in. Healthcare services as provided by WellPath include both scheduled services and sick call, RN monitoring, labs, pharmacy, intake screening, routine and special needs assessments for both physical health, behavioral health, and basic dental care. The board first approved this contract in February of twenty seventeen with several amendments over the past eight years to include updated contract language, COVID-nineteen updates, and increases for the cost of medical care. The jail medical budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five and twenty-six includes adequate appropriations and professional services to cover this agreement. The remaining amount of the WellPath contract for July twenty twenty-six will be included in the fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven requested budget. The General Fund provides fifty-five percent of the funding for the jail medical budget unit. Additional funds supporting the jail medical budget unit include public safety realignment, public health realignment, and CalAim justice-involved grant funds. Healthcare services provided under this contract are twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year via the staffing matrix outlined in the contract. And this includes fourteen point nine five full-time equivalent health care providers providing five hundred and ninety-eight weekly hours of health care services. So the average cost per client for this contract is twenty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-one per inmate or incarcerated person. And in comparison to state prison costs, the same health care costs are forty-one thousand three hundred and fourteen for state prison health care. And with that, the sheriff and I are both here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. First, I'll ask if there are any public comments? Okay, there being none, I'll bring them back to the board for discussion.
To the chair.
Supervisor Boone.
Sarah, when we're talking about the Medi-Cal JIs program. So when that, so we basically turn in invoices for that program and then that's, that money that returns, will that go back into the general? Because this $4 million is going to come out of the general. So anything we get back from that program, that'll refund the general plan or our general fund?
It could. So it could be cost avoidance. And so there's a claiming process that we submit eligible claims to the state. And then of course, they'd have to pay us, which we still want to be sure we test and is a new process.
Right, right. I'm just wondering, I mean, if it's going to go back, if that funds back, those funds go back into the general? Because if we're paying $4.1 million to these inmates, I mean, for their inmates' healthcare, when we get our monies back once we invoice CalAim, those funds come back to the county's general fund?
Yes, they could.
What do you mean by they could? It's not, it's not going to go to this company, right? No.
Well, again, this is a cost avoidance on the claiming side. So this is a little bit of a technical piece, right? So right now, we pay for pharmaceuticals in our contract. And so then, instead of us paying for those pharmaceuticals, we're working with DHCS to pay those pharmaceuticals, which would create some room in our contract to bring back and potentially renegotiate. So yes, you're correct, that we could go back in a future year with cost savings, that we've had a cost avoidance on pharmacy, and then come back and lower this contract amount. That is possible.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Who did, who got the second? Supervisor Baines. Okay, Supervisor Ziegemeyer, the first, and the second by Supervisor Baines. And we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Sutter County Probation Officers Association, beginning on July 1st, 2025 and ending on June 30th, 2028, and extending negotiated increases to unrepresented probation management employees.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the board, Veronica Baumgartner, HR Director. I am coming before you today to talk about the memorandum of understanding with the Sutter County Probations Officers Association. So as you are probably aware, our existing contract or agreement with the Sutter County Probation Officers Association expired on June 30th of this year. The county and the association began bargaining and reached this tenet, we, sorry, we began bargaining in March and reached this tentative agreement in June, or end of June. The Probation Officers Association ratified this tentative agreement on July 10th of this month. So a few of the highlights of the terms I'd like to go, go over with you guys. And obviously, the full memorandum of understanding is attached here in the staff report. But we were able to get a three-year contract with, with the association, which we believe was positive, starting with a 4% base wage increase the first full pay period after the board's approval, a 3% base wage in July of 2026, and a 3% base wage in July of 2027. Also, the addition of longevity pay. And I just want to point out that they were the only association that had yet to come in compliance with CalPERS and how the rest of the county has longevity. So we're happy to get that going for them. And in addition to the economic provisions, there was, you know, some cleanup to the county rules, comp time and how that is used, health insurance, old language regarding workers' compensation clinics, some of our rehire rules, and then the new and improved performance eval reports. So just some updates there. Obviously, if during the term of the MOU, the county's healthcare were to change, this is one area that we have what's called, it's called a most favored nations clause. So the association here, the probation association, is kind of holding out and waiting for what the general supervisory unit is to get on healthcare. And really, that's in the best interest of the county at this time too, because we would like to be equitable amongst all staff if we're able to for the healthcare piece. So in addition, we recommend that this base wage increase be extended to the unrepresented, unrepresented management classes, which is the deputy chief probation officers. There's two, and then the chief probation officer, and there's one. This action will ensure equity and prevent salary compaction between the represented classes and those that they manage. And, sorry. So the fiscal impact, I'll get to that. The General Fund pays for approximately 42% of the salary costs in the probation department. So the total cost for the General Fund is approximately $86,423 in fiscal year 2526, $67,410 for fiscal year 2627, and $69,432 for fiscal year 2728. A little bit about the longevity and the salary changes there, because this is, I mean, quite a substantial change. But for the first year, it's $74,890. The increased costs for 2526 are expected to be covered in the 2526 recommended budget. Should the department not have enough appropriations to cover these increases, staff would, would return to your board for additional appropriations. I would like to, you know, thank the association for their, you know, professionalism and willingness to meet with us. And I think we had a lot of good discussion. I know I, I sure learned a lot about the services that they provide to our community. And yeah, it was, I thank you guys for working with us. And also, of course, thank you to your board for guiding us through this.
Thank you, appreciate it. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have one. Ron Slavin.
Okay, hello, Ron.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to thank you guys for helping get a fair contract for the probation officers. And Veronica too. It was very collaborative process, so I appreciate that. This is the second time I've been a rep since '98. So I've been doing this a while. And this is the second time I've had a unanimous vote yes for a contract. So it says a lot about the group, Veronica and you guys. So we do, do really appreciate the fair contract. I hope you guys vote yes for it. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Okay, any further comments? None? Okay, there being none, I'll bring it back to the board for any comments. And then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the request.
We have a, we have a race for a second.
There's a race going on over here.
Yeah, so we have Supervisor Stevens with the first, and I think Supervisor Boone got you on this one. Supervisor Baines, so Supervisor Baines on the second. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer? Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Veronica, appreciate it, and thank you. We'll now move on to follow-up reports and announcements by CAO Steve Smith.
Thank you, Honorable Chair and Supervisors. Not much this week, just some positive activities going on with our Economic Development Committee. Just so the public and folks are aware, we have a consultant working specifically on economic development in Sutter Point only. And we had some good discussions yesterday. I just wanted to mention that so that people are aware, because we don't have our economic development position filled right now. But we haven't just sat there and waited for things to happen. So we're working diligently on that. And I think that's all I have for now, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. Now we'll move on to board comments, and today we will begin with Supervisor Stevens.
So today I had the pleasure, well, I went to a service for UnderSheriff William Billy Grove. I did not know this individual, but he had a wonderful service over at the Veterans Center today. And I can't tell you how impressed I was with Sutter County Sheriff. They had reached out to the family. They had been living in Idaho. He had been retired since, I think, 2006. And they really didn't know what kind of service they were going to have for the, the undersheriff. And Sutter County Sheriff reached out to him and provided him the location and the service. And Veterans Hall was extremely packed. And so, you know, it just gave that family such, such, you know, closure and a celebration for his life. So I really want to thank the sheriff and his team for putting that together.
Thank you, Supervisor Stevens. We'll go to Supervisor Boone next.
Okay. I got some really good news. The Live Oak Girls softball team, 10 through 12, is at the Western Regional Finals down in San Bernardino. They went through the first game against Utah with a 15-1 defeat, where they defeated Utah. And then they came back on the next day and they played against Nevada, 9-0. And their next game will be against Arizona, 6:00 PM Wednesday on ESPN. And it looks like they're going to go all the way. These folks are going to be in the World Series. That's what's going to happen with these kids. They are phenomenal. They've been, they're, they're, they're a force to be reckoned with. And they're all in sync, and it's the greatest thing you've ever seen. I mean, they're cheering, they're, I mean, it's, you could just tell they all think identical out there. They know exactly where the ball's going. They know, I mean, it's the craziest thing you've ever seen. I mean, I, I used to coach for 25 years. And you know when you see a team that's making things happen, and this is one of them. And, and it's a rare sight. And I'm glad to say that Live Oak, not Sutter over there, Live Oak is, is putting it on, everybody. And I've got a feeling we're going to, I'm going to try to sneak out of here tomorrow if I can and stay for the weekend and see if I can't root them on. But Sutter County's proud, Live Oak proud. Thank you.
All right. You got some Live Oak fans in the audience. Great job. All right. Okay, Supervisor Ziegemeyer.
Supervisor Boone, do you know where the, if they win tomorrow? Don't they make it to the series if they win tomorrow?
No, no, that's, then they'll go into the championship game, and that'll be on Friday at 5:45.
Okay, so if they win tomorrow, they play Friday, then from the...
That's the championship game is Friday for the...
In San Bernardino?
Yes.
All right, might have to...
Yeah, it's going to be...
Drive, yeah. We're rooting for you. I've been watching them on social media and watching them online. So awesome. Great service this morning, echoes. Great to see the supervisors there. He grew up in Sutter, right down the street from me. Great family, great people. Billy was awesome. It's just Sutter, you know, gosh, I think it's only about 3,000 people there. When Billy was there, it was about probably 2,000. So it's grown just... And I coached, actually, I coached high school football with his brother Paul. So great family, all in all, awesome turnout. I do want to close in memory of Wesley Don Klein, who passed away last week, and Roger Fayak, who passed away last week. Close in memory of them, send them a letter of condolences. Other than that, we'll keep rooting for your teams, for your ladies.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Supervisor Ziegemeyer. Supervisor Baines?
I'd like to close this meeting in honor of Fodjus Ing. And I'd like to have a letter of sympathy and condolences sent to the family of Salvador Alejo and to request first certificates of recognition. One, to go to the Live Oak Punjabi Heritage Association for a event that they're holding on August 23rd at Live Oak High School. And the second, go to the International Association of Punjabi Women. They're holding a festival, or Tiana Mila, August 31st at the Yuba Sutter Fairgrounds.
That's it. Okay, thank you, Supervisor Baines. A couple first requests for recognition for Cookie Emerald's exceptional 50 years of volunteer service. So if we could add that to the elections department. And then also have an announcement that National Night Out is August 5th from 5:30 to 9:00. There's going to be food trucks, games, face painting, canines, demonstrations. It starts at 7:30. Where is it located, Steve? At the sheriff's office. Okay. Did you want to add anything to that, Sheriff, about that night?
Yeah, you know, it's, obviously, it's national, right? And so it's an opportunity for us to come together as a community and, and celebrate public safety and just taking care of one another. Great event planned. There'll be food trucks and, and all the things that the supervisor just mentioned. So it's just a great way to come out and celebrate everything that we are in Sutter County. So I hope to see everybody there.
Awesome. Let's get, well, hopefully, everybody can make it. It'll be a fun night. Oh, go ahead, Jeff. I just had a couple of...
Also, I'd like to, I just remembered this, but August 24th, I believe, and I'm not sure, because I think 9:30 or 10, all the supervisors invited to. I think you've seen it, down in Robbins, there's a grant that has been given out to treat their water treatment, a well and, and water. And there's going to be local, local people and state people there that would, or is going to be participating in it. So we'd like to have everybody that, who wants to come out to Robbins.
Great, great.
I think it's July 24th, after tomorrow. You said August.
Yeah, it's Thursday.
Yeah, it's Thursday.
It'd be a little late.
Also, one more thing. I was, I was honored to be part of the parade for those girls that headed out of Live Oak and the sheriff's department. I don't know how we pulled all that off, but they did a nice job. We had a procession from Live Oak all the way to Yuba City. Fire trucks, cop cars, sirens blaring. And I tell you what, we put a show on and those girls went off with a hit. I'm telling you, it was something. I, I was so proud. Proud to be from Live Oak and proud to be part of Sutter County. And this whole thing is just, it's incredible to be part of. And I really, and I know these girls are going to win. So we're going to have some more work to do to help get them there. I know we raised close to $15,000 to help them get, get to Southern California. So we're going to have to work on another fundraiser for... But I know they're going to the Nationals all the way. They're going to go. All right, thank you. That's all I have.
All right, we look forward to celebrating with you on that victory, so. And then just a couple of last announcements that I want to thank the supervisors. Most of us up here attended the Peach Festival. There was like 35,000 attendees of this amazing festival that happened. Sapphire Marketing ran it, did a wonderful job at just the City of Marysville. I was very grateful for the attendance of the board of supervisors for that whole Peach Festival. And especially Supervisor Baines, who was able to give out a special award in honor of his father to... Who did, who did we end up giving the award to? You want to share that with?
Bruce Buttercavoli.
Yeah, to Bruce Buttercavoli. So just, it was a really awesome event. Anybody who didn't, you really missed out on something amazing. And then lastly, I'd like to ask staff or Steve if we could get a tour of the Hall of Records. It turns out, a couple of supervisors here have never actually been in there, in the old Hall of Records. And there's been a consideration to look at it down the road again for a potential meeting room. So if we could do that, it'd be great. And other than that, no further announcements. Then I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, guys. No closed session. Can't believe it. Yeah, like that?